Seeing as it is 7:30, the Monday, August 7, 2023, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Darren Lowert?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor Mack?
Present.
Counselor Tison?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuziskas?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us towards the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all of the people in our city, and to guide us, inspire us that we may be united in harmony and... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We will begin with the reading and approval of the June 20, 2023, regular meeting, June 20, 2023, informal meeting, and July 3, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Madam President, I make a motion to waive the reading of those minutes and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Going to take a couple of items out of order. The next item that we are going to do is going to be number 11048 on page three of our council agenda. Item 11048, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Mr. Sullivan Hewlett to the permanent position of fire department therapy dog. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sullivan Hewlett to the position of fire department therapy dog, and wish him good luck and many treats in his service to our community.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in Mr. Hewlett Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan Hewlett, I'm sorry. We will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. Okay, Mr. Sullivan Hewlett? Do you solemnly swear you have faithfully and impartially performed the duties of the fire department therapy dog according to law and the best of your abilities?
He does.
Congratulations. The meeting is now back in order. I'm going to, at this time, take three more items out of order, as we have received a lot of feedback about a couple of the items on our agenda this evening. And as much as I would like to tell myself that you're all here for a riveting city council meeting this evening, I understand a lot of you are probably here for these particular items. We do have an executive session that is scheduled for tonight's meeting, and in that case, everyone in the chamber would have to leave the chamber and come back in. The executive session is completely unrelated to these next three items that I'm going to take out of order. But in fairness and courtesy to the people who are here, probably for at least one of the next three items that I'm going to take out of order, I would like to take them out of order now, so that we don't have to have all of you leave the room for executive session, come back in, wait for the rest of the meeting for the items that you're actually here for. So again, we're going to, the executive session, as I said, we're having, is totally unrelated to these next three items that I'm going to take out of order. Item 11043, item 11045, and item 11046, which is on page three of our city council meeting agenda this evening. I would like to also say that the only action that the city council can legally take on these items this evening, as it is the first time on our agenda as it has been resubmitted to the city council, the only action that we can legally take on the items this evening is to refer them to the planning board and schedule a joint public hearing between the city council and the planning board. That is the process for these types of zoning amendments. And so, we will begin with item number 11043, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to change the classification of certain parcels of land along Route 140. Counselor Mack?
Madam President, I move to refer this to the planning board for study and report and to schedule a joint public hearing.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Heath, to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a joint public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
I may. Couple of things on this, because I'm concerned that this particular item is incomplete. The section one, and I'm looking at the ordinance that's been submitted, as I understand it, by Counselor Heath. And section one says, "By changing the zoning district classification from rural residential two to commercial two for two parcels of land situated northerly, northernly, and southerly of Route 140 Street being parcels M47-22-4, and a portion of M47-24-1, that portion west of Bike Trail parcel M42-20-7," and this important part is, in my view, "as designated by maps submitted herewith on the City of Gardner's Assessors' Map." In my packet, and I'm not sure if anybody gathered them, but I didn't, there were no maps associated with this. In order for the planning board and for the council to properly consider this, seems to me that we need to have the maps that the ordinance amendment says are attached to it, but were not, in fact, attached to it. So I'm wondering about the maps. It could be an answer, and then I have one other question after that. Perhaps the initiator of the petition could address the issue of maps.
Counselor Heath?
Madam Counselor, thank you. This is my first time actually going ahead and putting something in front of the council. So that's what I mean. And I guess if I can go ahead and go put it on, you know, I can attach it later.
So you'd like to include the maps as it is referred to the planning board?
What maps?
It's the...
I haven't seen them. I'm being asked to vote on them, not on the merits of them, but we're being asked to send something to the planning board that has maps and there are no maps.
There's no vote on this item tonight. This is a referral that we're making.
My comment is on the referral.
Counselor Boone?
Madam President, I understand Counselor Walsh's point, but we're going to refer the planning board. And I think Counselor Heath says, "Let's get the maps. Let's get everything right. There's going to be a public hearing." So there's no reason to hold this up, to send it, as long as, and I agree with Counselor Walsh, they should have the proper maps and everything in place. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Counselor Walsh?
I have one other question. Back in May, shortly after we disposed of this item the last time, I received an email from a... Linda Tocchi, from a public relations firm called Dewey Square, a multinational public relations firm called Dewey Square in Boston. And she said, "Hello, Counselor. My name is Linda Tocchi. I'm working with a developer on a possible project for the city parcel on Route 140, and they wanted to meet with me about it. I declined to do so because there was nothing pending on the council about it. But I did ask, who is the developer on the possible project?" She answered. Bay State Racing, she responded on May 23rd. "Bay State Racing LLC is my client. John Stephanini is their lawyer. He and I have worked together on a bunch of local projects." So Bay State Racing was the developer for these parcels on city land, and the rezoning of city land on 140. And there's nothing in this zoning change about Bay State Racing, or John Stephanini, or Linda Tocchi. And last Friday, I received an email from Carolyn Kamuta. Maybe others did too. It seems that others did too. She said, "I was informed by Dana Heath last night that the mayor and council members would be in favor of having a horse racing track located to Gardner, especially on the land that is owned by the city on Route 140. Is that why you want to change the zoning from residential to commercial?" So there's nothing, and there's nothing in this ordinance amendment proposed about anything about Bay State or racing track. And apparently, Counselor Heath knows something about it that we don't, and perhaps he might be able to explain it to us tonight.
Counselor? Counselor Heath?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, I definitely did have a conversation with Ms. Kamuta. There were some words that were taken out of context. I can't speak for the other counselors. I can't speak for them. I know that it's on record on how I feel. But that's just one of many businesses that would like to go over there. So from my understanding, this is for commercial. It's not for Bay State Racing, was it? Bay State, whatever you said. This is not for that. This is for commercial, and that's where we're heading with this.
I'm just looking for additional information with this all day. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Tyros?
Madam President, I'm really, you know, quite curious of the questioning we have tonight. It does not seem relevant to the zoning amendment we're trying to refer. I kindly refer to the Robert's Rules of Order for going after other counselors' motives in putting forward items on our agenda. As Counselor Dana Heath had stated, he's bringing this up. It's his first time. I think it's an important topic and adds support referring this to the planning board.
Could you, Counselor, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Can you raise your left hand if you voted no? Any other no's?
Counselor Walsh voted no.
Thank you, Counselor. Ten yeses, one no. The motion passes. Item 11045, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to amend section 1070 thereof, entitled marijuana establishments, to change the method to increase the quota allowed by the code of the city of Gardner. Counselor Mack?
Aye. Madam President, I move to refer this to the planning board for further study and report and to schedule a joint public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Heath, to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a joint public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11046, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Counselor Mack?
I move that we refer this to the planning board for study and report and to schedule a joint public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Heath, to refer the item to the planning board and schedule a joint public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Those are the three items that we have taken out of order. We will go back to the regular agenda. We are going to public hearings. We're going to continue with item 11026. I will take a brief recess at this time, just in case there's anyone who was just interested in the items we just went over. If you would like to leave, you can certainly stay for the rest of the meeting, but I will take a brief recess at this time for courtesy for that. We will continue with item number 11026, public hearings. Item 11026, I'm going to read the notice to a butters, July 5, 2023, to a butters and other interested parties. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, subsection 22, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, August 7, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. On the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures, as said companies may deem necessary in the public way or ways hereinafter referred to as requested in petition of said companies. Make-A-Drive, a petition by National Grid to install one single-owned pole on Make-A-Drive beginning at a point approximately 640 feet west of the centerline of the intersection of West Broadway and Make-A-Drive. Install one single-owned pole to bring 3PH power to new EV charging stations at car dealership. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for your identification. City Council of Gardner, T.T. Seraphin, City Clerk. The public hearing is now open. I just read the public hearing notice. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Please state your name and your address or the company you represent.
My name is Will Fontaine. I represent National Grid at 939 Southridge Street in Worcester. So this pole is a midspan pole going in, both dealerships, I believe it's Chrysler and Chevrolet, are both putting in EV charging stations. They need to put in a separate transformer pad on their property. In order to do that, we need to have an extra pole on their property to space out their services, as they have multiple already. So just to space that out to keep it safe for them and for our workers when installing, we were requesting this midspan pole be put in.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, is there anyone present in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone present in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone present in opposition of the petition? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Next item is executive session. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under exemption three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21.3, and exemption six of the Open Meeting Law to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21.6, and to approve the executive session meeting minutes of April 3, 2023. The city council will reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session for the remainder of the meeting. Is there a motion? Counselor Tyros?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to enter into executive session. Is there a discussion on the motion? If none, the clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darren Lowert?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuziskas? Yes. Eleven yeas, motion passes. As required by Chapter 30A of the general laws, I declare that discussing these matters in open session would not be appropriate as the discussion involves items related to the creation of the community center at Waterford Street School. The council will now meet in executive session. A brief recess will be called as the members of the public exit the council chamber. The doors will be closed and the public broadcast of the meeting will pause. Following the city council voting to close the executive session and re-enter into open session, the doors will be reopened, the public admitted back into the chamber, and the public broadcast resumed. The mayor, city solicitor, and purchasing director will be allowed to remain in the council chamber for the discussion. We're going to recess at this time, so the public can leave the chamber. Item number 11033, communications from the mayor, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by mayor's department summer celebration account, banner sponsorship report from the finance committee. Counselor Ron Cormier?
My head's getting mad on this. This is one of the more pleasurable things we have occasionally is to accept gifts on behalf of the city. Now, these are the banners that have been put up celebrating the city's progress in the future, valued at $200 each. I make a motion that we authorize the acceptance of these gifts.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to authorize the acceptance of the donations and gifts. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Mack.
I just want to mention, first, I want to thank the people who sponsored, but I also want to let the public know that the banners can still be sponsored. So that I just want to, if anybody's interested, to please contact Jessica Torri in City Hall, because there's plenty of lampposts left to be sponsored. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11034, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by mayor's department summer celebration account flower pot sponsorship. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Again, this is another gift acceptance request. These are for the numerous flower pots that have been put around town, looking well. They were donations of $200 each. Again, we thank those that have so generously sponsored these, and I believe there might even still be some sponsorships available. And with that, I make a motion that we accept the donations as...
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to authorize the acceptance of the donations and gifts. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11035, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by mayor's department summer celebration account, summer kickoff sponsorship. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yeah, we have a list of sponsors going down from gold to friend-level sponsorship. Again, very generous sponsorships by the community for this celebration account. I make a motion that we accept the donations with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to authorize acceptance of the donations and gifts. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11036, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by mayor's department summer celebration account, Welcome to Gardner sign. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Again, this is a new sign that was put at roughly the intersection of 140 and Rain Street. It's a tremendously generous gift of $8,600, and it looks lovely. And I make a motion that we accept the gift as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to accept the donations and gifts. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Heath?
I just want to say, sitting here looking at this, the Welcome Gardner picture, and this five handsome men right there on the side of it, that is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11038, a measure to create and authorize acceptance of donations and gifts for use by City of Gardner, Gardner Waterford Street Building. Counselor Darren Lowert?
Thank you, Madam President. This is another item that the finance committee met on. It's for creation of gift accounts so the city can accept additional donations and grants from private entities. In regards to the Waterford Street Building, as noted in the packet, Waterford will plan at leases the house, the Gardner Senior Center, as well as a number of private entities. These private entities will contribute to renovation improvements being made in the building. The finance committee was in favor, and I move to authorize the acceptance of these donations.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Darren Lowert, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, to create and authorize the acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Steve Gardner account. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11042, a memorandum from the Director of Public Works regarding staffing levels. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, this is a correspondence which the Public Works Director sent to the mayor to outline the problems that the Department of Public Works and the Municipal Grounds Department has had in meeting its responsibilities as a result of staffing level shortages, staffing shortages that have been created by people primarily because of the non-competitive scale at which the Public Service Department or the Public Works Department and Municipal Grounds Departments employees are being paid. And the communication outlines the scope of work that the departments are responsible to perform, and the fact that although the budget for all the employees is fully funded, they are 12 people down in staff, and it's going to get worse because there are people who are retiring, people who have had years of service for the departments. This morning, the Director sent a correspondence to the mayor following last Thursday's Public Service Committee meeting. I'll read it. Dear Mr. Mayor, the Public Service Committee met on Thursday, August 3, and voted unanimously to recommend increasing the Department of Public Works salaries to become more competitive with other private and public-related job descriptions and duties. The Service Committee instructed me to write this to you and that they endorse and support the objectives contained in my correspondence dated July 20, 2023. Thank you for the opportunity to present this letter and information to the city. With that in mind, and with the concerns expressed by the committee and by the Director, I move that the communication be placed on file. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Darren Lowert, to place the memo on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Orders, item 11037, an order transferring $39,643.48 FY 2023 appropriations from various DBW salaries and wages to FY 2023 various operating expenditures. Counselor Darren Lowert?
Thank you, Madam President. The finance committee met on this item. This is a transfer from the salary line item in the DPW budget to the operating budget to offset deficits in multiple accounts identified in our packet. Majority of this... Majority of this, roughly $32,000, is related to the shortfall in the street lighting account. Other items are related to cost increases in energy and utilities, fuel, professional services, repairs and maintenance, as well as an outstanding smaller bill for snow and ice removal. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Dernallwitz, seconded by Counselor Heath to authorize the transfer. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Just to point out that at our last Public Service Committee meeting, the city engineer reported that there's progress being made on credits that the city is entitled to receive from National Grid for electric, for streetlight payments that have been made at the wrong rate over the course of several years. And that there's a process that's gearing its end, it appears, in which the city will be entitled with substantial credit for those overpayments. It's unclear at this time, the city engineer, and maybe the mayor would know more about this, how that's going to be paid to us or how we're going to get the credit for it. But it's in the works and so these kinds of payments will perhaps be offset by the credits that were due.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for answering Counsel Walsh's comments. We are still in discussions with National Grid on this matter. We did receive initial correspondence that were looking at around $220,000 worth of credits. The issue that was done is when we did the conversion to LED lights, they gave us the reduction in electricity that we're using. However, we didn't get the new rate. And condensant light bulbs are charged at a different rate than fluorescent bulbs that are charged at a different rate than LED bulbs. So while our electrical use was down, we weren't switched from the fluorescent rate down to the LED rate. So that's where that difference comes between 2018 and present. The issue that we haven't finalized everything yet is that when we received that report from National Grid, it didn't have every streetlight listed on it. It only had some of them, but it's still missing a portion of the streetlights in the city that the city owns. So we're going and finding those poles for them so that they can calibrate those meters as well. And then we'll work out the details in terms of, is it, we just have three, it's about three years' worth of electric bills for us for it. So is it three years like that? Is it just so many per month? Is it used over a certain course of time? Those are still being worked out right there. This is the final number, but that's just the initial update that we have from National Grid on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion from the council?
Madam President, I'd like to thank the mayor and Counselor Walsh for bringing that up. That's a substantial amount of money that, you know, can pay for part of other things that we need to spend on.
Thank you, Counselor.
No, thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion from the council? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernallwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11039, an order authorizing the city to borrow $550,000 for Waterford Street School renovations. Counsel Walsh?
Move that the item be laid in the table.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Dernallwitz to table the item. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernallwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11040, an order appropriating $115,000 from available funds, sale of city property reserved to GRA Rear Main Street Capital Project. Counsel Dernallwitz?
Thank you again, Madam President. Finance Committee met on this item. This is to purchase one of the remaining parcels needed for the Rear Main Street revitalization project and add it to the engineering and design of the project. These funds will be appropriated out of the Special Reserve Fund containing proceeds from the sale of city-owned properties not taken by tax title. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dernallwitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to authorize the appropriation. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernallwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Appointments, item 11029, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Jane Klaboff to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring July 6, 2026. Counsel Tyros?
Madam President, I propose taking items 11029, 11030, 11031, 11032, and 11047 together and refer them to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second motion.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counselor Walsh to refer items 11029, 11030, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Francine Para to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring July 6, 2026. Item 11031, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Stephen Hirons to the position of Sailor of Weights and Measures for term expiring July 11, 2024. One, item 11032, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert O'Keefe to position of Information Technology Director for term expiring July 11, 2026. And item number 11047, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Daryl Sweeney to the position of Electrical Inspector for the term expiring August 6, 2026, to the Appointments Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item number, we already completed item 11048, taken out of order at the beginning of the meeting. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item 11041, a measure confirming the city clerk's appointment of Elizabeth Doran to the position of Assistant City Clerk for term expiring July 25, 2026. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer the items to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to refer the item to the Appointments Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item, we already acted on item 11043, taken out of order earlier in the meeting. Item 11044, in ordnance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 306 thereof entitled alcoholic beverages, to add a new Section 5 thereof entitled marijuana retail establishments to increase the quota allowed and change the method for amending the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Madam President, I move to refer the item to Public Safety for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tisoni to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 11045 and item 11046, we took out of order and already acted on at the beginning of the meeting. Item 11049, a communication from Economic Development Coordinator requesting an informal meeting regarding district improvement financing diff. Counsel Dernallwitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to schedule said informal meeting.
Motion made by Counsel Dernallwitz, seconded by Counsel Tisoni to schedule an informal meeting as requested. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, service committee, item 10993, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Elm Street, to install one, remove one, and relocate one jointly-owned pole on Elm Street beginning at a point approximately 360 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street and Cross Street and continuing approximately 500 feet in a self-direction. P6-80, replace and relocate plus or minus 30 feet west. Install anchor guy on west of pole. P7-99 is being removed. P10-99 is installing push brace on west side of P10. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, the saga of the Elm Street pole petition continues. As a result of, or following the public hearing that we had in which a couple of residents were affected by these, this petition were heard and expressed their concerns, the Public Service Committee met with, and as it turns out, this just isn't National Grid. As a matter of fact, they're probably the least involved of anybody, although they're the ones that have to submit the petition. This is a project, the Safe Roots to School project, a portion of which required relocation of poles on Elm Street. The funding, funding for this project is through the Department of, State Department of Transportation. They subcontracted the design of the pole, a different pole plan, to tie and bond the engineering firm. They came up with a plan, the DOT approved, that was then submitted by National Grid to, with their pole petition. We asked them, National Grid and Department of Transportation, to redesign the plan to accommodate the concerns expressed at the, at the public hearing by the residents. They did so, and they have submitted a new plan. At the, at the, at the last meeting of the Service Committee last Thursday, we voted unanimously to endorse that plan and ask, have asked National Grid, Department of Transportation to consider the new plan and amend their petition to include the new plan. We await a response from them at this time. So with all of that said, we ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Item 11026, a petition by National Grid, Make-a-Drive to install one single-owned pole on Make-a-Drive beginning at a point approximately 640 feet west of the center line of the intersection of West Broadway and Make-a-Drive, install one single-owned pole to bring 3PH power to new EV charging stations at car dealership.
The, the Public Service Committee met on this last Thursday and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the petition, and I so move.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier to grant the petition. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Committee of the whole, item 11023, Charter Review Committee Final Review Recommendation. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, based on our informal meeting earlier today, I move that the item be referred back to the Law Department with a request to amend the legislation to exclude the change to Section 6 of the Charter and to review the Charter line by line as suggested by the city solicitor to address gender-neutral pronouns.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Boone, to refer the item to the Law Department and request to amend the legislation to exclude the change to Section 6 and to review the Charter line by line to include gender-neutral pronouns. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm very happy that the council is moving forward with making the latter of the referrals because I believe that this is a critical document in our city, and it's important for the city to be welcoming and acknowledge all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, for the discussion. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernallwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 11024, a communication from the Community Development and Planning Director relative to an update to the open space and recreation plan. This item, we have referred to the Committee of the Whole and asked for more time. We will have an informal meeting before, prior to our Tuesday, September 5 meeting on this item that will be scheduled. So we will, if there is no objection, we will be granted more time. We will be granted more time. There is no unfinished business and matters for reconsideration. There is no new business counsel comments and remarks. Does anyone have any comments or remarks? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're sorry.
Counsel Walsh had to stand up.
You did, I'm sorry, Counsel.
I just could have moved to adjourn.
Oh.
Wonderful comment.
Second. Second.
That's the way.
All those, motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Boone to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees all as we adjourn, we thank you for the opportunity to join deliberation and action for the steering course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all that we have here, and the people who represent us here, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.